Good evening. It's December 4th, 2024. It's the North Canton Planning Commission meeting. We're going to have a call to order, roll call.
Mr. Delpays? Mr. Mahalson?
Here.
Mr. Sarah?
Present.
Mr. LaPage?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Okay, thank you. So, first thing on the agenda is the November 6th meeting minutes for approval. Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve. One second.
Roll call.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. LaPage?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalson?
Yes.
Okay, so the first thing on the agenda is the adjunction hearing. 1435 Milton Street Northwest, North Canton, Ohio, 44720. It's a request for a four-person family home for handicapped persons as defined by the North Canton Ordinance Number 1125.02, located in the R50 Single Family Zone District. Do we have someone from the applicant to address the commission?
Yes, Laura Mills on behalf of Hope Homes.
If you can go to the podium.
I'm Paul Herrera, Director of Home Homes. I'll agree with the Stark County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
And then I submitted, oh wonderful, I was going to say, I submitted a PowerPoint earlier today. I brought some copies just to pass down the line while we speak through some of the issues. Actually, I think I handed the wrong packet.
Oh.
Yeah, thank you so much. Well, good evening, everyone. We're hoping that at least we can start with providing a little bit more education as to what Hope Homes does, what this home is going to look like, the children that are actually going to be in the home. I think there's been some maybe misconceptions out there just because the information wasn't clear. So hopefully we can get a lot of that received prior to any questions. So Hope Homes, this home on 1435 Milton has been applied for, is going to be a four-person home. This home is going to be for developmentally disabled children. So you're talking anywhere from six to seventeen years old. And the entire idea is to give them a family setting, right? Children who cannot stay at home either because their parents can't care for them based on their developmental needs, or their parents are unable, or have their own problems, and they obviously need someone in the home with them. They need to create that family environment. They need to receive an education to the degree that they can. All of these children that we're going to talk about, they come through the state program, and they're placed in these family settings to give them the best quality. And that's really what we want to talk about. We want to get rid of this. I know there's concerns. There was some reference to other instances with caregivers. You know, there was one instance with a thirty, fifty-one-year-old caregiver, I think, killed by a, or stabbed by a thirty-four-year-old adult, certain circumstances like that. We're here about creating a family setting for children, and I think that's very different. So, like I said, we want to make sure that they understand the needs, and certainly the needs of the community. So we take a look at the next slide. How do I? Move this slide.
I'm changing them for you. I'll change them for you.
Oh, thank you so much. Okay, so if we could go to, obviously, we're here to talk about developmental disabilities. So what does that mean? We're not talking about children that suffer from addiction. We're not talking about the way we're children. We're not talking about putting them in a respite situation if they got out of a juvenile facility. We are talking about children that have autism. We're talking about children that suffer from seizures. We're talking about those that have epilepsy, as you see on here, that have all different spectrums, both physical and mental capabilities, that make it impossible for them to either stand at home, foster care programs that may not want to adopt or foster. And so the state has a program that then can put them, like I said, in this family setting. And it's intended that they stay in this family setting. So that the four that are eventually placed there can stay as long as possible, certainly until they become an adult. And then depending on whatever their needs are, whether or not they'll be able to live in another adult group home or be able to manage on their own. But we're not talking about children coming in and out in a transient situation. We're talking about creating a real family. And I think that that's something that is very important, as you understand this. Kids that suffer from Down Syndrome, of course, and any type of real intellectual disability that makes it difficult for them. Next slide, please. So we're here, and we're going to tell you about the type of children that we're going to have. We're going to talk a little bit about the home. We're going to paint the positive picture of what we think that Hope Homes can do for the community, and certainly what they can do for the children that are part of this community. But we also want to talk a little bit about the zoning code. And we want everyone to be mindful of the Fair Housing Act. So in 1988, what happened? The Fair Housing Act was amended, and why was it amended? We needed to make sure that there were two purposes in mind. Those that have disabilities are entitled to Fair Housing Act. They cannot be discriminated against. And so this is a single-family home, and this is going to be a family. Granted, they have disabilities, but they should not be discriminated against because of those disabilities. And so this was really important to make sure that those with disabilities can integrate into our community. If you can put the next slide, please. And this is important just to remind everyone, this Fair Law and Fair Housing Act. The very bottom of this slide, I think, is something that I'm hoping everyone will keep in mind, that when you enact or you apply zoning, state local governments may not act because of fears, because of prejudices, because of stereotypes, or unsubstantiated assumptions that community members may have about current or prospective residents because of the resident's protected characteristics. And right, they're protected because they have disabilities, and they need that protection to make sure that they can have the best life they possibly can have. If you can turn the next slide. So let's talk about some of the children. Right now, when I asked the state, your Mr. Green, he's going to speak later today, and Paul from Hope Homes, is, let me have a list right now of those children that are on this waiting list that need a home. So that you can see what, who are the type of children that would be in this home? Who would be your neighbors? So if you take a look at this, these are real children. They're on this waiting list. That Hope Homes can continue with the construction that they've already started. They hope to have this home up and running by April 2025. And some of these children, if they haven't been placed, or at least from this list, will be placed in the home. Now, there were some, also, I think, misconception, or maybe it wasn't finalized properly before the community, but this will not be a respite home. This will be for children that will live in the home on a permanent basis. So they may integrate one or two, and then work their way up to three or four. But this is in a situation where you're going to see different children living in that home unless they become adult age and they move on. And they obviously do this in a very respectful manner, in the sense that they try to put children of about the same age group together to the extent that they can. So if you take a look at this, and you take a look at what they suffer from, you're going to see about sixty-five to maybe seventy percent from the spectrum of autism. You're going to see some suffer from seizures, some have Down Syndrome. I mean, these are kids that really need a caregiver. They need a twenty-four-seven caregiver, and the twenty-four-seven caregiver will be there. That caregiver doesn't have a room because that caregiver isn't sleeping. That caregiver is there to give the best care to these children so that they can live together in this, in this family home. If we return to the next slide. So here's the lot, obviously. And a little bit just to learn about this particular home, it's going to be a four-bedroom home. As I, as I told you, it'll be a ranch-style, 2,077 square feet. It'll have a fire alarm sprinkler system on it. There'll be a fence, six feet high, and the backyard perimeter, covered rear patio porch, and the public sewer installed. Hope Homes, and we're going to talk a little bit about Hope Homes, and Paul can certainly elaborate, they build very nice homes in the community. The goal is to integrate into the community and be a part of it, and not create a home that looks different in any way, shape, or form, or brings down property values, or does anything to harm the community. The goal is to be part of the community. Return to the next slide. This is the design. This is what the home should look like. So that gives you the feel, this is a regular, single-family home. And that's something that we're going to talk about in the zoning code. If this was not, if this Hope Homes built this home and for any particular reason it ceased to be a home for children, any other single family that wanted to purchase it here in North Canton. It'd have four bedrooms, it would look like a family home. It wouldn't look different in any other respect. And it's not going to look different as you drive down that street. If you take a look at the next slide. So now we're looking a little bit at North Canton's code. And what does family need according to the code? Well, the family has to find that you can have no more than three unrelated individuals. So herein lies our problem. And so... If you ask me, this code's a little bit outdated. And I am not here in any way, shape, or form to attack the code. I am just going to give my opinion relative to the code, and maybe some perspective changes in the future that are more in line with the community. And I'm hoping that as good neighbors, we'll be able to have a conditional permit where we won't necessarily need to talk about the code. But limiting this, and we're going to talk about how this relates to a daycare, but limiting this to three unrelated individuals is and has been the problem in this respect. Now, if you take a look underneath this, Family Daycare Home Type B. So if we hold ourselves a family daycare home type B, as we'll see later in the code, it falls within an accessory use or an intended use of a residential family home. And if we're a family daycare home type B, as you're going to later see, you don't even have to be licensed. And you can have six children in the home, which doesn't really make any sense that you would be discriminating against four children that have disabilities, especially developmental disabilities. We turn the code, turn the page, I'm sorry. This is where we talk about our use regulations. And again, we're here for a conditional use permit. I think it is the easiest thing to do to make sure that the planning condition, you can take a look at the uses that we have. And as you've said, we're going to have a permanency with the children that are there. That can be a condition, that's still a conditional use permit. But if you take a look at these use regulations, accessory uses in 113302 gives some idea, one through eight, of what would be an accessory use. And there's that family daycare home. So family daycare homes where you could have six children. And let's think about, from a, from a standpoint of what you could potentially as far as a home lived next to. Now, six children without regulation that are coming in and out at all various times, with various different cars coming in and out of the driveway. Maybe it's a six a.m. drop-off, maybe it's an eight a.m. drop-off, maybe it's a pickup, three, four, five, six. The transportation in and out of that home would be substantial compared to four children, a caretaker, and them being taken to school. So I think when we take a look at why this family daycare would be allowed in a developmental disability, children would not be allowed, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Now, I want to talk about Hope Homes a little bit. Hope Home also creates and builds homes for adults with developmental disabilities. So if we look at the next slide, this is the Hope Home. This is at 316 Fifth Street Northwest in North Canton. Hope Homes builds nice homes. They take care of nice homes. They make sure that as you drive by, you, you have no idea that this is any different from any other home because that's the goal. It's not supposed to be any different. So this gives you an example of Hope Homes is already in your community, and it's already taking care of one home who just wants to be able to enhance what it can provide, like I said, in this instance for children. If you take a look at the next slide. This particular Hope Homes, 2010 Glenmont Thrive Northwest, Canton. And I know that everyone always says it dear, relative to property values. It's, it's just part of the deal. We purchase our homes, and we don't want anything within our community or neighborhoods to bring down the home values because we work very hard, obviously, to, to have these homes. If you take a look at this Hope Homes, it has obviously increased this, this particular parcel, which was only a parcel until 2021, and it is now a total value of over $400,000. And that's a Hope Home, again, that you would drive by, and you wouldn't know that that was a development for individuals with developmental disabilities versus any other home in the community. Return to the next slide. This one is 3512 Martindale Road, Northeast. And I realize I'm going a little bit outside the boundaries of North Canton, but I'm trying to give you a feel of how dedicated Hope Homes is in making sure that the homes that are in the communities, that they are part of the community once again. You can see this, just merely a parcel. Hope Homes have a value of about $277,600. And it's a nice home. Again, it looks like any other home. Last one that I will show you, the next slide, 9134 Hocking Street. This is a home in Maslin. And the total value on this is over $450,000. So Hope Homes has been around for a long time. Paul, I'll speak a little bit more to Hope Homes and their commitment, not only in the North Canton community, but in communities around Stark County. They also have homes in Summit County. So again, they're here to be a very good neighbor. And what they're really asking is if they'd be given this conditional use permit. So we have three children that they might be able to assume and assist four children in this, in this home. And the very last slide. Kids with disabilities deserve a family environment. And so there hasn't been, there isn't any reason why these children, especially the ones on a waitlist, should not have more opportunities to be in a family unit. There isn't any particular evidence in this particular case that the one extra child in this home to receive that benefit, that because of a section in the code that we believe is a little bit contrary to some of the other code sections that, that you do see within the zoning regulations, that Hope Homes should be denied. They're in partial construction in the sense that obviously, they, they've started this, and they have a little bit of concrete in the footing, and they really want to get this project underway with your blessing so that they could get this home open to being available in May of 2022. So with that, I'm going to open it up, these two, Paul and Bill, so that they can give you a little bit more of an idea on how the process works. And certainly, there's a provider. There is a caretaker that's there twenty-four-seven. I mean, these are not children that are, that are running rather through the community. If anything, they're, they're less mobile because of the disability that they have and the full-time supervision that they're able to have within this home. So I thank you for, for listening to our presentation, and then obviously allowing Paul and Bill to give you a little bit more.
Hey, Laura. Good evening. I'm going to bring up to you a little picture of Hope Homes. It is a 501(c)(3), not the property. It is not a commercial business. We've been in business or as a nonprofit for over sixty years. And there's a strong relationship in Stark County and a strong history because it started with Reverend Paul Keywitt, who was the minister at United Church of Christ Trinity. And he took a $5 bill from a parent who really needed assistance with their child, their son, and asked him, she asked him, would you do something to help me residentially? So he took that $5 and built Hope Homes. Hope Homes has over twenty-five homes in Stark, Summit, and Wayne County. There were approximately ten homes in Stark, and three are under development. We're building two more in Maslin, and we hope to continue in North Canton. We are the homeowner. We provide the leases to the individual or families, and we do all the property management in Nathan. And I'll leave you with this. Our motto and what we live by is quality home for a quality life. Thank you.
My name is Bill Green. I'm the superintendent of the Stark County Board of Developmental Disabilities. And our relationship with Hope Homes is the one of parcels. We are actually a funder of the services. We write each child's individual service plan as well as monitor the supports in the home. So that is our relationship with them. But would like to pardon the redundancy, but I would like to talk about this home a little bit on behalf of the Board of Developmental Disabilities, our seven-member board, as well as the 4,500 people that we do support. We are dedicated to providing safe and nurturing and inclusive home for children with disabilities. Our mission is to empower the children and youth, helping them to thrive and reach their full potential while fostering a sense of community belonging. We do recognize that the establishment of this home has raised concerns among the neighbors. We're committed to open communication and collaboration with them and with the local community. We invite residents to engage with us through meetings, informational session, and opportunities for dialogue. Like the 700 other homes in Stark County that support people with developmental disabilities, this home will promote an atmosphere of acceptance and understanding, enriching the North Canton community. Our top priorities are the safety and well-being of the children and our care, and as well as the surrounding community. We believe every child deserves a loving and supportive home, and we're committed to being good neighbors. Together, we can create a more inclusive and compassionate community for everyone. We look forward to working with North Canton to address any concerns and to celebrate the positive impact this home will have.
Thank you. I think that will conclude the Star portion unless there are questions.
Okay, we're going to turn this next session of this meeting to a public speak. So if anyone would like to speak on this additional use, stand up, go to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
My name's Adam Harris. I live at 1420 Milton Street Northwest. So first, I'd like to say we're not against Hope Homes, or we're, we're not against having these children raised in a good setting. I think that's a great thing that they're doing. I just don't think that our small street is the place for it. Currently, I live at 1420 with my wife and a two-year-old daughter. There are four houses on this dead-end street. There's no turnaround. It's a small street. The traffic on that short street is already busy. So if you had one home, it's going to increase the traffic by 25%. Based on the, the permit request, it actually shows that they wanted to build two homes and have four to eight people. So I don't know if that's no longer on the table, or...
I couldn't speak to that. We're not...
Sure, please.
We are not able to build homes adjacent to one another. It is a state regulation to build. Even if we wanted to build, we couldn't do it with funding from the state or community. So that's no longer on the table.
No. That, that is just what we were provided with, and that's what I was moving off of there.
So let me confirm, Paul. What you're saying is it would only be maximum of four?
Four in the home.
In the home.
And we would not be able to build next to it.
What does that mean, four in the home?
Or individually, children?
So there would be no more than four?
No more than four. And the caretaker would be not living in the home, but providing services?
Yeah, so again, this meeting has cleared up some of the unknowns that I had, but it's nice to see the list of people. I think that it could have been more forthcoming with the information. It just seems like we've been kind of kept in the dark. I can't stand by my point, this is a small street, that traffic is going to affect us. But I do like the idea of only having four versus the four to eight. As far as the caretakers, what requirements, I guess, will they have to be required to meet? And not only the safety of the, the children in the home, but the public around them. How, how are they going to keep the children and the public safe? That's other information I would like to know as well. And the, the answer may not come tonight, but that's something I have concerns on.
Yeah, so each person is required to meet a...
So, so Bill Green is speaking. Go ahead.
Yeah, so each, the provider that is selected will be state-certified, and each of the staff in the home will be specially trained to ensure that they can address each of the child's needs. We, as the Board of Developmental Disabilities, will regularly monitor those services, as well as the state has responsibility to certify and monitor the home to ensure not only that, that, that the children and youth are safe, but certainly the surrounding area is as well.
I'm just questioning, Mr. Green, they're employees of Stark DD?
They are not. They, they will be a, a private provider.
Okay.
The, the, the Board of Developmental Disabilities cannot provide home and community-based services. We can only fund them.
Okay. So the individual providers run background checks and...
They're required, yes. Just so you know, we, we, as the board, actually, for all the providers in the community, we actually fund them so, to ensure that they are, are able to get those.
Okay.
They're state of the, state of Ohio certified?
Say that again.
They're state of Ohio certified.
Yes.
Providers.
Correct.
And so as far as the, the business discussion, again, this may just be my personal view, but if someone's paying and receiving a service for it, to me, that, that represents a business. So I just feel like allowing this is going to open the possibility or set precedence for allowing other businesses in settings like this. And I just do not think that's the way to go. I think North Canton's, anyone you talk to from around here, they like North Canton. It's a small community. It's quiet. And I just feel the more businesses that you put in the, the small, single-family home areas, it's going to create something that people don't want to live in, and it's not going to be something after. So again, I'd like to keep the small neighborhoods in North Canton the way they are. That could just be my personal view. Those are the, the statements I would make.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak? Yes, please go to state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Pierre Hallam. I'm at 1428 Milton Street. First, I want to say that I feel that some of this could have been avoided if it would have been clear and given to the neighbors to begin with. When the property was first purchased, it was under, we were under the impression that homes are being built and new families were just coming in, that it wasn't like a service style... that it wasn't like a service-style type home. You know, now everyone wants to be clear and give us all of this information. Then I feel like if it was given in the beginning, we wouldn't be here and we wouldn't have all of these misconceptions and all of these notions of what it's going to be in traffic and people and things like that. I noticed on the website, I think the article may have been edited, but initially it said that there was going to be up to eight children, that it was going to be a four-bedroom home and one room was going to be for respite care to allow parents to have, you know, daily days and be able to drop their children off and things like that. Another thing is, you know, we're saying that we're giving to the community, but there seems to already be a list of children. Are those children even from our community? You know, I'm the new resident in the area. I've been here for two years now. I saw at one point there was a plan that showed like, oh, there's already businesses around us, which there are. However, our street is still a small street. There's Reed's Funeral Home. It's a very quiet building. There's trees to kind of hide that building. Dr. Thomas is behind us. Once again, there's fencing and trees and things like that. So it kind of preserves our street. My fear is that now we get a home and although, yes, I see the plans, it's a home, but it's still a business, a 501(c). That is a business model. Yeah, it may be a nonprofit business, but there is money being exchanged. Like you said, in Pittsburgh, the children are going to be paying rent and different things like that. We have staff that's coming in. What happens? How many staff? You know, these are the things that we're thinking of is what kind of traffic? What about the families that are coming in? Again, like my neighbor said, you know, we are a dead-end street. We are a small street. We don't even, we have, I think, one street light. There's no sidewalks. You know, it's just not a street where I feel that that type of business should be. It is something that the community needs. However, that need can still be met, but put it in an appropriate location for that need to be met. With that need being met, does that mean that now the neighbors have to, you know, be in a position where now we have a business? Now we feel that we don't know what our properties are going to, you know, go down to. I know that they show charts, but honestly, all houses have increased over the years. Properties have gone up everywhere. So what does that mean for us if we want to, one day, resell our homes? You know, is this going to be an issue where people are concerned because, you know, we have a Hope Home there? So these are just some of the things that I'm concerned with. I have a niece that's six. She has autism. I have a nephew. He's eleven. He has ortho cryosis. He goes to Shriners Hospital. So I understand what it's like to need these particular needs. However, let's make sure that we're putting them in the area that's suitable. We have regulations. We have ordinance and things like that. You know, you have twenty-five homes in Ohio or in this particular area. Why wasn't it done the correct way even to begin with? You know, it's been around for a long time. So these are just some of the things that I'm thinking of when it's here, what is it truly going to be like for us that own our homes in that area?
Thank you. And for everyone, that's why we're having this tonight is so that it does give you the opportunity to come to the city and speak your opinion on this conditional use. So we do appreciate you showing up tonight and stating these. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Podium, please. Again, say your name and address. Thank you.
Close. You need to share one last one if you can have your own.
You know, I've got to break out the sheriff's tool. This is our neighborhood. This is us.
Please state your name and address for us for record.
My name is Gaden Tucker. I live at six-two-five Pittsburgh Avenue Northwest in North Canton. Please spell my name correctly. I live here. Recently, I was accused online of not living in my own neighborhood and how did I have an opinion? So I live right here. As you can see, my property directly is affected. This red circle is the proposed site that already has the, you know, the base built. As you can see, everyone in our neighborhood, that whole first row, half the second row, we're all here, okay? Everyone in our neighborhood circles it. It is the center of our neighborhood. It's not on the edge. It's the center of our neighborhood that's being affected. Okay? So that gentleman over there, Gordon, his grandparents built his home. Drew's here tonight. His parents bought his home and now he owns it. We are a neighborhood of generations. I've only had my home twenty years, so, you know, I'm kind of new. We are good people. We are kind neighbors. We epitomize what neighborhood means. We look out for each other. We mow each other's lawns. We watch each other's home when we're away. Every time Adam's garage door goes up because it just randomly does that, I walk over and push the button. When Sierra had a tiny little baby muskrat sitting running around her garage, she called me. I spent two nights over her house with a little cage. We are nice people. And this has been rough for us. We have been maliciously attacked, brutally attacked for days now, online, simply for coming to the city council meeting. I've been called things you can't even imagine. Bigot is one of the nicest ones. And it's heartbreaking because we are good people. We are kind people. We live in a tiny little neighborhood on the tiniest corner of North Canton. We're working-class people. We have we have white families and black families. We have straight families and gay families. We have young families and old families. And we're being called racist and we're being called bigots. We are good people and we don't deserve that. We live on a quiet, small, dead-end street. There's no traffic. There's no noise. There's no lights. There's no crime. If you know anything about our edge of the neighborhood, you would know that all spring and all summer long, every night, cars come, not on our street. They slow down because every night at dusk, all of our neighbors come outside. And we sit on our Porsches and we all turn here, to the circle. Because our family of deer come here that we take care of, legal or illegally. We feed them. We care for them. We protect them, just like we do our neighborhood cat. We are good people. We were told, as they've mentioned, that this was going to be a family's move-in. This was a rental property for a family. Okay? That's what we were told. That's what we believed despite statements online. And we were okay with that. We wanted more families, more people to appreciate our neighborhood. We've had businesses encroaching on our neighborhood for years. Just two years ago, there was a zoning meeting right here in this room. I was in attendance. Several other neighbors were as well. We were sent letters. We were invited. We came. We spoke because there was an issue in North Canton where when businesses want to move into a neighborhood that is residentially zoned only, what they have traditionally been doing in North Canton is just moving in. If they start building, then, well, if somebody objects, then we'll have a planning committee meeting about it. Then we'll all get to come and talk about it. Okay? And then they're going to get their business because they're going to say, well, we already started building. It's unfair to make us stop now. Two years ago, we had a committee, a planning committee, zoning committee meeting right here because of this issue of backdoor permits, where they start upfront requesting single-family residence, but that's not how it ends. And we had a meeting because North Canton was trying to get everybody in line with their correct zoning and their correct permits. And we spoke at that meeting and we said then, we did not want a business in our neighborhood. Didn't matter what kind of business. We are a quiet neighborhood and we didn't want businesses on our street. And we were reassured at that meeting two years ago that that would not happen. We were told that a business could not be put in our neighborhood because we were residentially zoned only. Now, I don't have any problem with the purpose of this business. It's a great purpose. But it brings traffic and it brings lights and it brings twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day-a-year employees. It's business, okay? And at any point, at any point, I'd like to remind people that at any point they could have chosen to put this in an area zoned for a business or zoned to mixed use. At any point, they had a choice that we did not have. We cannot pick our neighborhood up and move it. They can choose where they put a business. We have no choice. I would like to also say that I agree with Sierra and Adam that we should not have found out about this from that post, that article you have on top. That's how we found out about this. And it says, posted October twenty-third, this was the original posting. Hope Homes will provide a newly constructed four-bedroom home that will host three, house three children between the ages of six and seventeen with one bedroom dedicated to families in need of temporary respite care, meaning families can utilize the comprehensive care available temporarily when a break is needed, et cetera. This press release was how we found out. Now, I understand that they're stepping back and saying, wait a minute, that's not where we were going with this. But imagine our shock. Imagine how we felt when we didn't have to, we didn't learn this from them. They're saying they want to be our neighbors? Then come to me as a neighbor and you talk to me. Don't make me find out via a press release that this is what you're intending on doing and putting a business in. And then when we say, wait a minute, that seems like a business, tell us it's not. Now, I am, we all are very kind and reasonable people and we are more than happy to have a dialogue about it. But we shouldn't have had to go to a city council meeting to get this situation pushed to get that dialogue. That shouldn't have had to happen upfront. If they had come to us upfront as the neighbors they want, they say they want to be and say, this is what we'd like to do. We're telling you upfront. We'd like to talk to you about it. We're nice people. We'd have had that conversation. At this point, we've been instead maliciously attacked and accused of many things that are unkind. And I have to say, my disappointment right now in my fellow citizens of North Canton is great. We live in a small town because we want to live in a small town. We live here because we have small-town values and those values say that when we disagree, we have intelligent discourse about it. What we don't do is go online and tear each other apart and call each other everything but our names. I am saddened by the behavior of numerous people in the last few days. I believe that we can do better. This isn't Washington. This isn't even Columbus. We can do better. We are more than willing to have a discourse. We welcome the discourse and I'm glad that it has begun this evening. But it's not done yet. We still need conversations. And I think that we can have those conversations. But we have to be, we have to be part of that. We shouldn't, we shouldn't find out through press releases and then have press releases not match what we're then being told. There's a lot of misinformation out there. We love our neighborhood. We don't want a business in our neighborhood. I don't know if we can come to a compromise. But I certainly know that we have a right to have a voice in that. And I hope you will consider that this is our neighborhood and we love it and we are not bad people. And I hope that you will remember that we're the people you're here to represent. We are your citizens. We are your residents. And we want you to remember that as well and to think about us when you're making these decisions too. Thank you.
Gene, I got one question for you. I'm sorry. What was your address?
Six-two-five Pittsburgh Avenue Northwest. It's on the corner of Pittsburgh and Milton.
Six-two-five Pittsburgh Avenue Northwest. Did you not receive by mail this notice?
For this meeting?
Yeah.
I received it for this meeting. Yes, we received a notice for this meeting.
Okay.
After we came to the city council meeting. I didn't get mine until one day, but two days ago.
Well, again, I want to remind everyone, this is why we're having this meeting. So, yeah, I just wanted to state, I mean, your name is listed. It was sent, so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Let's say something.
Yes. Again, state your name and address, please.
Absolutely. My name is Brew Gold, PAU. I live at fifteen-eleven Milton Street. I'm not explicitly opposed to what you guys hope to achieve. All I ask is that, in practice, as your contractor, to be thorough and to clean up after themselves. There's about a quarter inch of dirt smeared down Milton. It's just not thorough. I know new construction is tricky. I work in the construction business, but it's a matter of being thorough and having integrity. That's brilliant. Thank you.
No, that's a very good point. And the city does have a very good building department that keeps and monitors that.
It just needs a broom, honestly. A broom with a blade. That's all you need.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please, ma'am.
Sandra Hutchinson, seventy-six forty-five Carmen Drive Northwest. I don't live immediately adjacent, but for ten years, I lived on Royer Street, close to the Fifth Street area. And then six years ago, we bought property back in North Canton after we retired, my husband and I. We've known about Hope Homes for over forty years. The history was, as I've been knowing the history all forty years that I've known about Hope Homes. And for me, it is a nonprofit, the same as a school, the same as churches, the same as other nonprofits, that it meets the nonprofit classification. The schools employ teachers. The schools employ business practices. The schools and churches employ employees and all of that. And churches are located within communities, neighborhood communities. I would classify the chapel on Knight Street as a neighborhood. It's a nonprofit organization. So is Hope Homes and has been for over sixty years. Nonprofits employ employees. And I think it's important to keep that in mind. And Hope Homes uses good business practices. That's what has made it a strong nonprofit for forty years that I've known of and longer. I also know they have a strong board of directors. I know the president of the board of directors. So they function as a nonprofit organization. And I support that. But I want to speak as the mother who has a disabled child on the spectrum who grew up in North Canton, went through the North Canton City School. who grew up in North Canton, went through the North Canton City Schools. I want to tell you, he is the adult that he is today because of North Canton City Schools. Hope Homes want these children to have that same opportunity our son has had because of his success with the special abilities program here in North Canton. He has successfully done further education. For nineteen years, he's been employed at St. Luke's Home, right here in North Canton. If any of you have had family members at St. Luke's in the last nineteen years, our son Drew probably served them their meals. He served them by knowing their first names, knowing their diet, and he served them with humor and grace and integrity. That's a child that grew up all of his life with a disability and people looked down on him. But he finally is able to say, I'm a person with disabilities, but I'm okay. And he is okay. And that's the opportunity I think that Hope Homes wants to give children. And we owe them that. That's who North Canton has been as long as I've known North Canton. The location is a good location because it plants children in a neighborhood that they need to be in. They need to be in those neighborhoods. They need the surrounding love of neighbors that care about them. I knew one of the ladies that lived on that street her whole life. So I know about the neighborhood. The children on Milton Street that will live there deserve to have the same opportunity this community and school gave our son. And when I think about North Canton, I think how Boss Hoover brought children here from England to give them a home and a safe place during World War II. It's always been about children in this community. It's been about love. It's been about acceptance. It's been about helping people grow and thrive and learn. And I don't expect this community to do anything less going forward. When I picture the children who will live in their new home there on Milton Street, I picture Jesus picking up one of those children, loving them and wrapping his arms around them, asking them, what is your name? What do you like to play? Why, I like to play too. Can we play together? That's what I picture. And I picture Jesus turning to those near him and declare, to such a child as this belongs to kingdom of God. What do you picture?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, thank you for everyone just standing up and speaking tonight. No, uh, state your name and address, please.
In the respect of my minor children, I could just withhold my address. I'm in North Canton City Schools. Uh, but I'm happy to state my name. But it's not being on the internet. So my name is Melissa Henley. I, I am a lifelong North Canton resident. My dad was chief of police here in the city, um, years ago. And I have, oh, Chief Wilder, hello, mayor. You know, I have a biological daughter and I have three boys that I adopted from foster care as a single mom. And they are all served by the Stark Board of D V. And I am here because I, and I, I listened as I was doing the daycare circle and pickup. I listened to the entire simulcast. And what I heard was that there is a neighborhood that has drawn assumptions before they had information. I heard that there is a neighborhood that is more welcoming to deer, that is more welcoming to a family of deer than they are to disabled children. I myself have four children and, and in a house. The house, the, they are building resembles the home that I live in, in North Canton City Schools. The difference is, I don't get paid. If you think about, you know, I heard concerns about traffic. If you think about a person where there's a couple and maybe a teenage driver and they work outside the home and they go to school, that's three people driving. That's three people a day coming and going. That's the exact same amount of coming and going that these caretakers would be doing. Because if there, there's three of them, it's, it stands for reason, twenty-four hours in a day, eight-hour shifts. The traffic is not going to be excessive. We're not going to be having a conversation about putting in a street light at the end of Milton in months or years. But I ask that as a person in this community that we all stop and just find out what the facts are. This is such an underserved population, a marginalized population. My five-year-old son has a rare genetic disorder. As of twenty-nineteen, there were twenty known cases in the world. And all of these children present with autism, speech delays, ADHD, seizure disorders, intellectual disabilities. At two and a half, he came to me. At only thirty pounds, nonverbal. He had been through several eight homes in nineteen months of foster care. He was getting pushed aside. These kids deserve normalcy. They deserve love. They deserve safety. They deserve a school district like North Canton. My son will be what he will be because of North Canton City Schools. And I ask you that you open your heart and open your minds. I heard somebody talking about, you know, some dirt at the end of the driveways. They're doing excavation and new construction. And all it really needs is a broom. Embrace your neighbor. Do you have a broom? Could you sweep it up? Welcome these folks with as much vigor as, as I heard about the family of deer. And I just ask that you meet all of these children and, and you come together as a neighborhood, as a community, and you just keep your minds open. Because it is very sad that there is a bunch of keyboard bullies out there that had a lot of things to say to people that didn't deserve it, right? They were making assumptions based upon a lack of fact, based upon generalizations. And that's not fair on either side. So, uh, I just ask that, you know, you consider the possibility. Would we have a meeting like this if, uh, a sex offender was moving into that house? We wouldn't.
You'd get a postcard with every invitation.
But you wouldn't have a bed.
I don't think that sex offender is an equal representation of.
You're right, it's far worse.
Yeah, that's a far comparison. And online bullying, you were the one who made the post without coming to even the first meeting. So this would have been.
I didn't know about it.
Yeah, this was in the proper place, it's never one of them. This would have been a proper.
Let, let Melissa have her say, please.
But here's the thing. Assumptions go both ways. Generalizations go both ways. I just ask that you consider that these are people, these are children. They're small. You're not moving, you know, forty-year-old men in there. You're not moving sex offenders in there. You're not moving people that are perpetrating on each other, which is also some of the comments that were in response to my post. And so, please, know that there is a face and a name that goes with every single person. I get comments all the time. I got a comment the other day that my two-year-old was drinking out of a baby bottle. He has dyspnea. It is part of a component of his cerebral palsy. And so, if not on your street, where? Would it be acceptable to put these children? Just because you don't see it doesn't make it go away. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Does the commission have any questions?
I do. Ju- just so I understand the, the nature of Hope Homes. Someone stated that, uh, there's twenty-four-seven caregivers that don't live in the home. Does that mean that there's three shifts of eight caregivers around the clock that are always on duty? Is my understanding correct?
Yeah, that is correct. So, yeah, but it's not Hope, Hope home staff. They are, they are.
M R D D. Yeah. Okay. The home that's located at, and this is for the city. The home is located at three sixteen Fifth Street Northwest. Was this home granted a conditional use permit? It's in North Canton, city of North Canton.
Yeah, so we do have a active case on that one that was recently brought to our attention. And, um, Attorney Mills and I had talked last night that, uh, they had received a, a notice from our code enforcement. It was more in regards to the rental registration. Uh, my understanding, after talking with our code enforcement officer today, that the number of occupants in this home does not rise to the level that requires a conditional use. It's below the four.
Okay.
Um, and I am finding, we haven't followed up in this conversation, so this will be new information to you, that the rental registration has an exemption for licensed, state-licensed facilities. So this is a state-licensed facility, so they will be exempt from the rental registration as well.
Okay, and one thing that caught my eye here was the progress is well underway on the project. So, for, during plan review, this was permitted as a single-family residence. Correct.
That's correct.
Without the understanding that it was going to be operated similar to a business?
Yeah, so as part of, uh, my staff report, I was intending on giving you the back, the history, if you will, on the project. And, uh, this came to me through a complaint of a resident. And, uh, the resident had forwarded me this article that was passed out to you here, um, earlier. And when I reviewed this and reviewed our approval that was issued for the home, they obviously conflicted. I had, um, shortly thereafter drafted a letter and sent it out to Hope Homes, who responded almost immediately. Uh, we coordinated a meeting. We had discussed that, as I under, correct me if I'm wrong, but as I recall, there was a misprint in the article. But through those meetings, we also discovered that what was approved is not what they need to operate under with the four. So we issued the approval as a single family, as defined by the North Canton ordinance, which does, uh, there's quite a bit to it, but basically it was the, um, an individual and two unrelated. And, um, that meets the definition of a family. However, as you're, you're hearing tonight, what is proposed is four. So again, as part of the meeting, I had identified that a conditional use is required by the North Canton ordinance to operate with four unrelated, uh, residents.
Aren't there four bedrooms in this facility?
There is.
So if there's four bedrooms, I mean, why would you, I guess, assume that there was only going to be, or did somebody apply for this as there was only going to be two residents and one caregiver? Or, it doesn't matter the number of caregivers.
Yeah, so the, the architect that had prepared the plans had simply put in single-family, one person and two unrelated individuals. So, um, we never, we issue single-family homes all day long to individuals. We, we never question who's going to be. If, if they tell us they're occupying it as a, a single family, that's what's on the documents. That is the approval we issue. And that's what the limitations of the permit and the approval is, is documented as. So if we get, and no different than tonight's hearing, the application is what's being presented before you. Should you find that it's appropriate to issue the conditional use and there's a change later on, then we send out, that's where our code enforcement come in. They investigate it. If they do find that there's a discrepancy, there are legal proceedings that we follow to bring it forward, just as we've done tonight. Okay.
Two questions for Hope Homes representative. How often would the residents be leaving the facility or are they just there almost permanently? Probably for medical reasons, they would have to leave, but.
Right, they'll probably could answer that, but you think schools, uh, attendants and doctors.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, schools, they'd go out just, uh, like you and me. For activities, uh, we want them to be socializing within the community. I mean, so, uh, it's their home and they would be living like any other family.
All right, I didn't know to what extent they were confined, uh, but they're not.
They're not at all. And we want them to be a part of the, uh,
Okay.
broader community.
And will there be, uh, other visitors visiting as well?
There'll be, and it's certainly an occasional visitor, absolutely.
The family?
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, no different than you and me.
More other questions? Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion for against the conditional use for application C U S E dash twenty-four dash eight, located at fourteen thirty-five Milton Street Northwest.
Can I, I'm sorry, could I ask one more question?
Sure.
Should have spoken up, Martin. If they said there were only three residents that were going to live here, this would go, this wouldn't even be here for a conditional use.
That's correct. A family is considered one individual and two unrelated when it gives you the three that you mentioned else.
So if this is denied, that it's, the home could still function, maybe not economically, but it could function. It's a three-person home and it would be within, uh, meet all zoning, uh, requirements.
Right, that's right.
But it's still limited to an occupancy, overnight occupancy of four maximum because of the number of bedrooms. In three, it's in, it's in compliance with the ordinance. Four does not without the conditional use.
Yeah, so we're, we're talking about, um, a different regulation than the zoning code where we talk about the occupancy that's more along the lines of the property maintenance code, not, um, that's, it, it gets a little complicated with the relation. So if they're related, and that's, that's the challenging part, is even with a four-bedroom home, if they're related, we cannot regulate how many people are living in that home.
Thank you.
Could be a blended thing. It could be a blended family and the children wouldn't be related. This is what, and I don't know if I'm allowed to speak, but this is, this was a concern that I was expressing. We're not here to, to obviously go in depth into your zoning code. We're here to try to be good neighbors and get this over the goal line. But first of all, the case law is clear. We're not talking about a commercial business. That ship is sailed relative to these type of homes. So, it's not a business. But what we're talking about is what is a family relationship anymore, right? And are those with developmental disabilities discriminated against because they're looking at the disability? That's where the daycare kind of synopsis comes in. For three, you're exactly right. If there's three children in here, in this particular home, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't need the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit is just to allow one other additional child to be part of this family. And it will be a true family unit. So, that is what the permit would be for and what we're requesting. But there, there's a lot of good law out there that we're not here and shouldn't be here to discriminate against the developmental disability because four children in that home would be certainly permissible. And that's where we're hoping that we can just get through this process and allow the extra child to be in the home and be part of that family. And I don't know that it's so much an economical request as it's a community request that the other three children be able to have the fourth child in there as part of their family too. It's built appropriately. It could house any other single-family member. Any other single-family in North Canton would be housed the same way as this home. It'll be, it's just they'll have a caretaker that'll be there to develop and address their needs. It's licensed by the state to make sure that they have everything.
Martin, could you...
For record, that was Bree Mills that was speaking.
Martin, I was just going to ask, could you clarify? Adam Harris, sorry.
State your name.
Adam Harris, 1420 Milton Street. Could you clarify, did you say it was currently a caretaker and two children? Or a caretaker and three children on the current application?
So, we have a couple different measures there by the zoning code. And when we're under the four, I do not see any provisions in the zoning code that requires us to count the caretaker. Once we rise to the level of four residents, there is a clear definition that says the caretaker counts as that on there. So, the application before commission tonight is for four residents plus the caretakers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I asked the plan commission, do we have a motion for or against?
Chairman, if I may offer here, if commission is so inclined, the law director has advised that you are permitted to deliberate in private. So, you may take a recess to deliberate and come back for the vote if you wish. I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Martin.
Yeah, if, if I can interject on a couple things, just for... This is Brendan Heil, the law director for the city of North Canton. One, Martin is absolutely correct. This is an adjudication hearing. It's a quasi, quasi judicial function of the board. And so, if you, you think it would be helpful to have a brief deliberation or a long deliberation, I guess, although ideally not, you can do so. The vote just has to be part of the public meeting. I do, did want to clarify a couple some things about the code, just for the board. We appreciate, obviously, that the applicant and their attorney are here to advocate for a particular viewpoint. But I just, I do want to clarify that that isn't, they're advocating for a particular viewpoint. It is not an accurate necessarily representation of how the current state of the law is or how our code reads. And I just, I do want to clarify one point about the relationship between the daycare, which is the family daycare home type B. It's being an accessory use. And the reason that's an accessory use is because it actually requires a permanent resident. So, that is someone who lives in their home. It is prime, the primary use of that facility is as a home. And we allow a person who owns, or I guess, lives in that home as a primary resident to operate a daycare with their own children and with other children. That's what that is. It's, it's, it's different, and it's not a perfect analogy to what we're talking about here today, which is there isn't a permanent, the owner of the home is not basically operating a... Sorry, I'm getting feedback.
This is not a family daycare home type B application.
Correct. And I just want to point out that there's a reason that that's an accessory use versus this being a conditional use. And that's because accessory uses are accessory to the primary use. And that's really the only thing I wanted to talk about other than, I know there's been some mention of the constitutionality of the definition of family, and that is not something that, currently, there is no reason to believe that our definition of family is unconstitutional. So, I just wanted to point, give some legal advice and some context to those comments. And that's it. And if there are any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Does the board have any questions? No, thank you for that clarification. Do you want a recess or do I hear a motion? Either or?
I think we take a brief recess.
Okay.
I'm fine, either way.
Take a recess, okay? The commission will go to another room. We'll leave everyone sit here, okay?
Brendan, do we need a vote for the recess?
Uh, no, it's not an executive session like another public meeting. They can, they can just go into it.
Okay, thank you.